Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. First, I want to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Bangor School Committee on Wednesday, April 27th, 2022. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It looks like we have one recognition this evening. Superintendent Taggert?
Yes, thank you Chair Saret. Each spring, the Congregational Institute sponsors a nationwide high school visual art competition to recognize and encourage artistic talent in the nation and each congressional district. The winning works are displayed for one year at the U.S. Capitol. Bangor High School student Hannah Wajtakowski's art piece Inside was awarded first place in the 2022 Congressional Art Competition. The Bangor School Department and the Bangor School Committee will recognize Hannah for her incredible work. Hannah's painting will be framed and put on display in the Cannon Tunnel in Washington, D.C. Also tonight, her teacher Susan Bryant is here. Susan, if you'd like to come up and introduce Hannah, we thank you for all that you do too.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks, thank you very much. Thank you.
Are you going to see it?
Well, it's, we have a copy that we can show you.
Yeah.
But it's on its way to Rockland. There's an art opening at the Center for Made in February art in a couple of weeks. You can also show them that one. We were talking to Mr. Taggert earlier, and this was actually a one-day exercise in class, a work inspired by a famous artwork that she picked, so.
So this was the artwork that I chose, and we had to make a work inspired by it, and this was mine.
Oh my gosh.
Do you want to bring it up so they can see it?
Yeah.
What is the size of this? Just curious.
The size of yours is 12 by 18.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Wow. That is incredible.
No worries, it's beautiful.
Oh my gosh.
Principal Butler, you want to come up and shake a hand too? I'm sorry, I forgot. Come on up, come on up.
Maybe they can do, oh, I have some fun ideas for this.
It's good.
Yes, 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 please, please.
Hannah, I wanted to bring your principal up too.
Congratulations. I haven't seen you yet. Thanks so much, very proud of you.
Hannah, could you tell us how long it took you to do that?
Eighty minutes.
They don't appreciate the efficiency.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
No Chair Saret, no adjustments.
Okay. Next, we'll move into public comments. Before we go into public comments, there is a statement that I do need to read. Members of the public may address the school committee for up to three minutes on school and education matters. Complaints or allegations concerning specific employees or students will not be allowed, but will be addressed through established policies and procedures. Public comments shall be directed to the school committee and be brief and not repetitive. The school committee's practice is not to respond or debate with the speakers during the public comment period. The superintendent or his staff will follow up on comments outside of the meeting as appropriate. Before starting, please state your name and place of residence. Do we have anybody for public comment this evening?
I thought I missed my time. This already on?
Yes, and if you could, please just state your name and place of residence.
So my name is, my name is Landon Micho. I live at 77 St. Water Avenue. First off, I'd like to thank the committee for letting me speak today. I had a speech prepared today, but then I was informed that the chairmen wouldn't be here today, so I decided to shorten it since they're not here. But recently, I've done a form, and I've gotten about eighty students that currently go to Bangor School to fill it out, which it could be a bit bigger, but it's what I got so far. And the biggest thing I wanted to focus on tonight is that forty-seven percent of students said they don't feel safe in school. And, actually, never mind, I got to work on this more. My bad, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Landon. Is there anybody else this evening that wanted to do a public comment? Yeah.
Good evening, my name is Michael Norton from at 83 Elm Street, Bangor, Maine. This week, I applied for a full-time position with the Northern Light Health Practice, so I just wish to seek the support of the council and the superintendent or the committee. Whatever you could do, it would be great to get that position because it means a lot of value to the total Northern Light Health Practice system. And for context of the school committee, they broke ground on a new pediatric wing at Acadia Hospital today, this morning. And with regard to the University of Maine and the overall university system beyond K through 12, I have been delegated to one single point of contact at that university. His name is Rob Martin, and he works for the Security and Safety Department. Now, there are eight thousand adults who enroll in that system every year, so I just hope I have the support of the Bangor Schools getting this job with Northern Light because something's wrong at the university level. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have superintendents' proposals and updates. First is an action item, ratification of Administrator 2022-2025 contract. Superintendent Taggert?
Yes, thank you. I'm recommending ratification of the 2022 through 2025 Administrator contract.
So moved.
Do we have any discussion? Take a vote? All those in favor?
Motion passes six zero, thank you.
Next is an informational item, April 1 count update. Superintendent Taggert?
Yes, I will provide you with an update on the April 1 count, and you have a document in your folder that you could take a look at, but just to kind of give you a little gist of it, and you'll have time to look at it on your own, but it's in the packet for your review. We do have a slight decline in students, and they are going to homeschool, and I believe it's COVID-related. We also, on the bright side, we are opening three full-time pre-Ks next year, Vine, Abe, and Down East, which we believe will be an increase in students, and I can tell you that Vine is already full, which never happens this early, so we anticipate more pre-K students next year. And I would tell you that we are actively recruiting, Principal Butler and his team looking at tuition students. I would also tell you that the enrollment is down statewide. I was recently at a superintendent's meeting, and they talked a lot about the baby boomers, and it's a trend across the state where we are the oldest state in the United States, and we have the oldest average age in the United States, and so our student population is reducing throughout the state. If you looked at the handout, and you don't have to look at it now, but I would tell you that we are fifty-seven students less in April 2022 than we were in October of 2021, so we were down fifty-seven, and once again, I would probably attribute that to homeschool with COVID. And I would also tell you that our tuition students during the year, which is a little odd, went from a hundred and eight up to a hundred and eleven, so that's a plus three. So we'll know more as far as once we get our registrations, as far as tuition students, but that's my update on the April 1 count.
Any questions for Superintendent Taggert? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to business action items. The first is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of April 13th, 2022. I need a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I have to abstain.
Okay, want to abstain? Passes five zero.
Next is the financial report from February 2022. I need a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Motion passes six zero.
Okay, next we have personnel, starting with teacher nominations, the secondary year probationary contracts. Superintendent Taggert?
Yes, I'm nominating for the committee approval and election teacher nominees for the first year and second year probationary contracts from September 1, 2022, to August 31, 2023, and continuing contracts from September 1, 2022, to August 31, 2024. First-year probationary contracts, Fruit Street School, Sarah Hicks, music. Down East School, Sarah James, grade two. Pupil Services, Kelly Berglin, District ELL. Okay, if you would, I would like to take a vote on those three.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Nope, all those, all those in favor?
Motion passes five zero, thank you.
Next, we have.
Six zero.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, next are the second-year probationary contracts. Bangor High School, Dawn Bezwick, Special Education. Caitlin Dolof, Science. Justin Jax, Jock, E.L.A. Ryan Missler, History. Jamison Plow, Special Education. Mark Quinn, Physical Education. William S. Cohen School, Jacob Gebhardt, Music. Daniel Magus, Grade 7, 8, Science. Laura Timken, Grade 7, 8, E.L.A. James F. Dowdy School, Sarah Freeman, Mathematics. Abigail Lawrence, Grade 6, E.L.A. in Social Studies. Samuel Pickard, Special Education. Abraham Lincoln School, Patricia Hefner, Grade 2. Down East School, Paige Catterett, Special Education. Robin Gagnar, Grade 3. Danae Johnson, Kindergarten. Ashley Sherry, Grade 1. Fairmount School, Casey Falcon, Grade 4. Kelsey Gilmore, Grade 4. Fourteenth School, Tracy Reardon, Special Education. Fruit Street School, Mallory Hersam, School Counselor. Emma Rappaport, Special Education. Mary Snow School, Gabriel Argon, Grade 5. Pamela Fox, Special Education. Sarah Smith, Grade 4. Vine Street School, Vanessa Bean, Special Education. Pupil Services, Lindsay Chadbourne, Social Worker, .5. Emma Jandrow, Speech Language Pathologist. Carly Price, Speech Language Pathologist. Acadia, Tamara Share, Special Education. Bangor Regional Program, Corey Fleming, Special Education. Jessica Cuska, Special Education. Courtney Reader, Special Education. Okay, I'd like to take a vote on those folks.
Need a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Motion passes six zero, thank you. Okay, this is continuing contracts. Bangor High School, Kristen Baker, Physical Education. Simon Chetaneva, Science. Rachel Gordon, E.L.A. Matthew LaLand, Science. Evan Marshall, Spanish. Ashley Thornton, Special Education. William S. Cohen School, Carolyn DeRoche Turner, Grade 7, E.L.A. Kristen Geet, Mathematics. Rachel Larrabee, Grade 6. James F. Dowdy School, Allison Brown, Social Studies. Robert Esti, Physical Education. Chelsea Lowe, Special Education. Matthew O'Connell, Mathematics. Stephen Rotano, Social Studies, E.L.A. Kate Robichaud, Physical Education. Carrie Thurman, Science. Maynard Walton, Mathematics. Down East School, Autumn Preble, Grade 1. Casey Quinn, Special Education. Carolyn Segine, Grade 3. Fairmount School, Tiffany Alby, Grade 2. Gillian Cookson, Speech Language Pathologist. Fruit Street School, Cassandra Acevedo, Special Education. Fourteenth Street, Erica Griffin, Grade 1. Megan Mahoney, Grade 1. Chloe Wetstone, Grade 2. Vine Street School, Zachary Finney, Physical Education. Deidre Yao, Special Education. Pupil Services, Heather Haskins, School Nurse. Suzanne Howton, School Nurse. Erica Hutchins, Occupational Therapist. Sherri Thompson, Special Education. Bangor Regional Program, Peekaboo Mauer, Social Worker. Mackenzie York, Special Education. Okay, I'd like to take a vote.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Need a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Motion passes six zero, thank you.
Okay, our next business action item is the Administrator Second Year Probationary Contract. Superintendent Taggert?
Thank you Chair Saret. I'm nominating committee approval and election of the following Administrator nominees for second-year probationary contract from July 1, 2022, to June 30, 2023. Daniel Mayo, Director, Bangor Regional Program. Shannon Shaw, Principal, Abraham Lincoln School. Sarah Vickers, Principal, Down East School.
Need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you, motion passes six zero.
Next business action item, the 2023, 2020, 2022, 2023, rather, extra duty assignments. Superintendent Taggert?
Thank you Chair Saret. I'm providing a comprehensive list of extra duty assignment nominations for 2022, 2023. These nominations cover most of these duties. In anticipation of your questions, I've made notations indicating service to Bangor when not our employee. Chair Saret, you'll be very happy that I do not need to read all these names, but I'm requesting approval.
I need a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Motion passes six zero, thank you.
Next business action item, donations, and I believe it's member Luciano.
Yep. So to the James F. Dowdy School from the DMT Fund in memory of Danielle Thompson, a cash donation to support students having a total dollar value of $250. Thank you.
I need a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Motion passes six zero.
With thanks. Introduction, we have one introduction item tonight, the first reading of Policy E. Yep, Superintendent Taggert?
Yep, Revised Policy KG, Community Use of School Facilities. I'm recommending first reading of a Revised Policy.
Need a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Motion passes six zero, thank you.
Okay, that takes us to committee updates. First, do we have any comments or questions from the committee? Member Sectors?
I'd like to thank the committee members for approving the, the final contract. It was, it was a well-deserved raise in some, to make hiring easier, and the people who, who work in those areas really deserved what, what we passed, so I want to thank everybody for that.
Any other comments or questions from the committee? Member Mundell?
Yeah, I just want to briefly thank Landon Micho for standing up in front of this group. It's an intimidating thing to do, and for a student to come up and present what might not be great news to our ears, I think is, is really important, and I want to commend him, and I hope, I hope he'll come back at some point, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from the committee?
I just had a quick question. So I actually read through the facility rental forms, they're great. I was curious if there was a place we could find online where, what's going on at all of the stadiums at any given time, mostly Cameron Stadium, because, not just because it's in my backyard, but I'm sure there's other people in my neighborhood that are curious about what's happening there, and, you know, how late it's running, and are these local teams, and should we go watch, is that weird? You know, so I was just curious if there was a place we could find that, you know. I know it's a lot of fun for us to wander up and watch those games, but we don't want to creep out parents who are like, where did these weirdos come from? So just curious if that was something we could work on or have a, a location for all of that. I have looked at Parks and Rec, they don't have it. I did ask, they thought it would be nice to have, and that's where I'm at, so just figured I'd share that and ask if there's a way we could maybe facilitate a central place to find that.
Steve, do you want to comment on that at all? I know we can work on our website with Ray Finney, so I'll make a note of that as well.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for asking the question. We do have a master plan. We have not put it out to the public. The coaches have it.
Okay.
Daily, what happens is from 2:30 to about 9:00, we either have track, girls field hockey, I mean lacrosse, and boys lacrosse. That ends. But we didn't put it out for everyone to see, and I've kind of gone back and forth with that with different people speaking to it. We, we have a system where only myself and Joe Nelson can make changes. What I'm trying not to do is if we put it there and we have a slot open, and they might see an hour that's free when it's actually not free. I'll give you example.
I follow.
Girls lacrosse gets off at 5:30. We have boys lacrosse starting at 7:00, but to get ready for that, they come on a little early.
Yes.
So if someone saw that there is a free hour, I would have schools or people wanting to come on while the girls field hockey team was leaving and while the boys were trying to come in. So being the first year, it's a good question, because we are really, this is very new to us.
Yeah.
In that, schools are asking to rent it, and the only time we could rent during the week is if our boys lacrosse team's away because they've chosen to go late.
Okay.
Because of the coach's ability to get there. And the girls can get there after school because it's a teacher.
Okay.
The track team is settled and gets off around quarter six or six, so on the weekends, it opens up more slots. And so we really tried hard, we're working currently on a new fee structure, so it'll make it able to serve more of our community, which we do always, and maybe even some surrounding schools in days that they need it. But clearly, this is not a money-making facility. What we're trying to do is, the Bangor Schools and the rec, any of the Bangor students that would be involved in soccer, baseball, field hockey, track, they would get, we don't charge those organizations. They, they come on, and we have an agreement with the rec department that we've had forever, because we want our student athletes and kids there. We're also trying to piece in the people that want to use a track recreationally.
Right.
So we're currently working on a lighting system that would allow to have that happen. We're even toying with having the light stay on after we leave, so that if someone wanted to walk, they could walk and not be in the dark.
Yep.
It's currently a timing system, and we're.
They seem to kick off around nine now, so.
Right, and we, and we were thinking, I'm glad you asked this, because we were thinking, should we leave it on until, say, 9:30?
Yeah.
But we have a neighborhood, and we're cognizant of the, the PA system.
Yep.
Because I don't live that far away either, so my wife, same as you, is.
Can hear it.
Correct. And so we try, what we're trying to do is hit that good medium spot where the student athletes can have a good experience.
Yeah.
And we certainly don't want to have the neighborhood, you know, not have an ability to have, you know, a regular life.
I mean, I would say, my experience with my neighbors has been, we love it.
Yes.
We think this is really cool, we love it, but we're also just like, do we know any of those kids?
They're all our kids, put this way, I'll tell you what we have. They're all our kids, because we have 111 track athletes, okay, which is awesome. And we've got like thirty lacrosse girls players and boys, the same, and we also help John Babs practice because they come on with our middle schools.
Yep.
So we wanted to make this available not only to the high school, but to the middle schools.
Okay.
So they kind of make, we try to make that be part of our whole program.
Okay.
The weekend ends up being youth sports, youth lacrosse, boys, girls, soccer, slugger, baseball, whatever we can do that would put tuition students from sending districts along with the Bangor students in our clinics.
Okay.
And this will continue in the summer, because part of the tuition that Mr. Taggert spoke about, we are really working hard to offer an opportunity for parents to bring their students to our facilities with our coaches, witness how we treat them. So then, when a youngster goes home, they go, Mom, I really like Coach So-and-so, and I'd like to be there, and that translates into them choosing us for, say, that reason, plus obviously the academics. So to answer your question, we do have a whole, I could share it, but if, if I put it out there, you would see exactly what we're doing. The other thing happens, we change. So when a game changes and Brunswick can't come because of busing, you can imagine, like, we're doing that almost as we speak daily, there'll be things happen. Going forward, I think you'll see a pattern of being offered at around 9:00, weekends not that late, but same. And as soon as we get the rental agreement, you might see some other schools there, but, but coming up, major track meets, May 28th, we're going to host, we've been picked to host the league championship.
Oh, okay.
On June 4th, on June 4th, we're hosting the state.
Okay.
So we've done some great things, you know, we've, we've got Chick-fil-A going to be there, offering, we're trying to make it a big thing so that the kids from Southern Maine come here, and it's the best I've ever had, so. Obviously, the track and the field, everyone that comes, they just adore it. It's like, we've had a few schools come down, and we've helped Brewer with a game because they've helped us with their, the track for the last couple of years, and so when the kids come over, they literally.
I mean, it's a, it's a great facility.
The only thing we got to do, probably make it, is get a lighting system, so if a couple or if somebody wants to walk, they'll be in the light the whole time. The other thing we thought of, I think we need, I talked to Abe today, we, we want to put a phone in like they have on campuses.
Yeah.
A couple of those, so if we ever had a problem, someone could call easily. But this is definitely a work in progress, so I'm taking everything in, and I'm not saying no, we wouldn't share this whole thing with everybody.
I can imagine there's many constraints.
Because I was going to, and then I, I've been reluctant to do it, but it's something as we go forward, it might be something that's going to be what we do. But then everyone would know, and then it's going to create some situations where the traffic flow is important. I want the girls to be able to get off comfortably, the other team to come on comfortably, and when you do it all at once.
Yeah.
It ends up being sometimes where we got cross-traffic, and it's not the best thing if we can help, especially with COVID.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Well, thank you.
That answer your question?
It was definitely a start.
So it's going to be, you're going to see, we have, we have two, two state football games next year already.
Okay.
They've asked us for postseason in field hockey and track. We've got, obviously, field hockey and soccer, so you can expect to have large events there, which will, then we got to deal with the parking. We're getting, Abe's working on lights being in mountaintop parking lots, we'll have that.
That'll be nice.
Mr. Missburner will work hard to use the Cohen School when we need to for things of safety.
Yeah.
Because we got to think of all the things, like what if there's a thunderstorm during the track meet?
Right, yep.
You need to be able to cover all those bases, but, so it's kind of new for us, because we haven't done it for 20 years. For years, we hosted everything.
Yeah.
And so now we're back at it, and we'll get better at it, but we're making notes as we go, buying things as we can, and I keep giving them credit, but Jerry's been great, helped me get through this, so I hope I don't wear as welcome, but the, the team's been great, thank you.
Sure, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll follow up with, with Ray Finney for you too, and see what we can do with our website. Okay, you're welcome.
Any other comments or questions from the committee? Any other comments or questions from the committee? Okay, moving on, any representative reports? Okay, I just have a very brief one. The Spruce Committee will be meeting this coming Thursday at 6 o'clock, and I'll be attending. Student committee member update?
Thank you. I just have a couple things tonight. So tomorrow is going to be the Comeback Talent Show, and we hope to get as many people as possible to come see it because we haven't been able to do a talent show for a couple of years because of the pandemic. So there's many great acts that are lined up for tomorrow. It's going to be at 7:00 PM, and admission is $3 per person. Also, Kosie Ifeji was, which, who is one of our graduating seniors, won the Natural Resource Council of Maine's Brookie Award, which is given to young people across Maine who show strong environmental leadership. There's a great article on the Bangor School Department website that goes into depth about it, but it's really great. She was one of six people in Maine, and I think she was the second youngest to be selected, so that's really good. And AP tests are coming up, so a lot of students are preparing for that at the high school. It will be a stressful week next week and the week after that. And it's just a busy month in academics and in athletics and all sorts of things. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we have no reports, so information items, important dates. We have several. Wednesday, May 11, 2022, regular meeting, 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. Tuesday, May 17, 2022, school committee member, members retreat from 8:30 AM to 3:00 PM at Rudman and Winchell. Wednesday, May 25, 2022, regular meeting, 7:00 PM, council chambers. Wednesday, June 8, '22, regular meeting, 7:00 PM, council chambers. Monday, June 13, '22, first reading of the school budget with city council, 7:30 PM here in the council chambers. Thursday, June 23, 2022, regular meeting, 7:00 PM here at the council chambers. And finally, Monday, June 27, '22, second reading of school budget with city council, 7:30 PM here in the council chambers.
Can I add one thing?
Please.
Just wanted to bring to your attention that on May the 11th, the DEI Committee will be reporting out to the school committee. Also, on Monday, June 13, the, or excuse me, on Wednesday, June 8, the Mental Health Committee will be also reporting out to the school committee. So look forward to those two events. And also, I want to bring attention to June 23. That was a date change due to June 13. So that's a Thursday instead of a Wednesday meeting.
Great, thank you. Final opportunity, any questions or comments from the committee? Member Sprague?
A nice job by our vice chair filling in tonight. Well done.
Thank you, appreciate it. Member Mundell?
Yeah, Carolyn, you reminded me that I, just before I got here, I saw, I, I believe it's on Maine Public, their website, there's an article about Kosie on today, and today's, I don't know if it made the, the radio or if it's just on their website, but it went into some good detail about the work that she's done, which is really phenomenal. So I wanted just to add on my congratulations to Kosie for all the, the work that she's done. She's phenomenal. So, and also just a quick note that the Mental Health Committee is meeting tomorrow at 3:15. So we're looking forward to that.
Thanks so much. Anyone else? Final questions, comments? Okay, I need a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Passes six, zero.